I'm going to call this special meeting of the Board of Mayor and Alderman to order. And we'll start out with calling the roll. So I have Alderman Barnhill, Alderman Blanton, Alderman Caesar, Alderman Peterson, Alderman Berger, Alderman Vice Mayor Brown, Alderman Potts, Alderman Baggett. And the mayor is here also. We now have an opportunity for citizen comments. Is there anyone who wanted to speak to this body? I don't see anybody coming forwards. We'll continue to move forward with discussion of the City of Franklin's strategic plan. Who's going to take over now? Corey?
Good luck.
All right, guys, I'm back. Thank you. I'm glad nobody's booing me out. All right, that's good. We are here tonight to start the strategic planning process. We're going to finish up mission and then actually start into the strategic planning process. So with that, our agenda, we're going to talk a little bit about strategy and culture. We're going to talk about vision, mission, values. Couple of those things you'll recall we have done. We still have one left to do. We're going to talk through challenges. Now, tomorrow, we are going to come back and we are going to determine and confirm some goals. We're going to do some small group work and we're going to talk about future staff work. So you might recall, we had the option of either doing this in one day or two. We're doing it in two days. So the first three things on this are going to be what we cover today. Next slide, please. Little bit about the project schedule. If you look at this, we are actually, down here is July 29th and 30th, our strategic planning retreat. After this gets done, what's going to happen? I'm going to go ahead and work with staff. We're going to talk through some of the things that come out of these sessions. And then we're going to do what's called a measure gallery. A measure gallery is an opportunity for staff globally to be able to give some input on that. I will talk some more about that tomorrow, but those are some of the things that are coming up. Staff will have, and not just leadership staff, but staff in general, will also have an opportunity to give input on this plan. Next slide, please. Everybody's favorite, vision, mission, values. Here we go. Next slide. Hopefully now this is looking familiar. I came out here several months ago and we worked through values with the Board of Mayor and Alderman. I'm not going to read them all to you. Next slide, please. I came out here, oh, so vision, again, explanation of this, vision is where we are going, future focus, very general. Mission being what we exist to do. Current focus, very specific. Next slide. And we have a vision statement as well. America's finest hometown driven by excellence, balancing preservation and progress. So that is now set. So we have values, we have vision. Now we're off to, next slide, please, mission. So we went over this last time, but it's been a little while, so I just wanted to refresh real quick again, why we're here, what we exist to do, what we seek to achieve. And we'll let everybody read. Next slide. And this is our first thing to work on because we do not have right now a mission statement for Franklin. So if we can, go ahead, next slide. Submission statement examples. And these are all ones, remember last time I kind of showed you guys someone's from the private sector? These are all public sector examples. While we go ahead and look at this, you may recall, last time I was here, you guys answered three questions, Post-It notes. I've got all of the information on the Post-It notes here. So I'll pass it out if anybody wants to look at that again. Michael will pass that out.
It'll be a party.
And you don't need it for any reason, but I know that sometimes people just like to be able to kind of look at where we came from and where we're going to. Question one, why do we exist? Next slide. If you recall, we actually, after that, we went through and we were looking for some themes. The themes that came out of it, you guys have got the raw data, that's what those bullet points are, but some of the themes were service to citizens, quality of life, laying the foundation for the community to thrive and preserving a sense of community. Next slide. Question two, what is unique about the way we do things? Next slide, please. High-quality services, balance quality and efficiency, balancing preservation and progress, dedicated, thoughtful, committed to community, considering diverse options, transparent, teamwork, responsive. I had a heck of a time reading my own handwriting, so be very happy I did this. Next slide, please. And then question three was, what would happen if we stopped doing what we do? Next slide. And the answer to that was chaos, right? Loss of self, we would lose our heart, our dedication. And then we had some specific characteristics. And again, look at the Post-It notes for that. Where is the box with the markers?
The markers are there. Oh, you have one marker on the...
Oh, that's all I need. Okay, I'm good then. Thank you. Next slide, please. And now we have this problem again.
Not a problem.
Not a problem. We're on it. Okay. So it is time to start thinking through this mission statement. Can you bring me back to the one with the sample mission statements on it? It's probably back about five, six, seven, something like that. There we go. What does Franklin exist to do? Why are we here?
Our goal is...
All right.
Provide high-quality service in a collaborative fashion, building community, and balancing preservation and growth.
So you obviously have got that written down and you talk faster than I write. So give it to me one more time.
...
Yep. High-quality service. I don't write that slowly.
In a collaborative fashion.
There wasn't much movement on that one.
All right, so provide high-quality service in a collaborative fashion, building community, comma, balancing preservation and growth.
What I like about where the mayor is starting is that we're not just talking about residents because I do feel like we've got, I think if we put residents, if we specifically name residents in our mission statement, then it misses all the other stakeholders that we serve and that we work with and stuff. So I like that he walked away from that and it was more about building community because I think community involves a whole lot of people. Even those that actually visit us are temporarily part of our community. And so I think that's, that part I really love about that. We've got the balancing preservation and growth in our vision statement. So I don't, it doesn't bear repeating necessarily, but I do like, Mayor, where you started with the idea of building community because I do think we're part of building community, for sure.
So I'm definitely hearing liking this building community. Thank you very much, Mayor. It's always easier to react to something, so that's really helpful. Eric?
I'll give her a second. Okay, so the couple of things, looking at the examples on the board that we may want to just think about. The idea of quality of life, because I feel like that is kind of our, at the end of the day, that's our product. So maybe some reference to that's what we deliver, not just services, but an overall quality of life. And I like the concept on the bottom one about the idea of strategic investment. I mean, we make strategic decisions and investments that shape the future of the community. And having, you know, processes and a framework that help those happen effectively is a big part of what we do too. So those would be the two things that I don't see in there that might make sense to try to integrate, but it's a fantastic start, Mayor.
The last one, let me ask you, it actually ties strategic investments and quality of life. Do you see those as tied or do you see them separately?
I see quality of life in Alderman.
Okay.
But yes.
Greg is very thoughtful over there. Anybody else want to chime in? And remember, this is when we're doing, this is both elected and staff. So this is open to everybody. This is fair game. Great.
I'd say my only observation, I think we're going in the good direction, is that this feels less distinct or unique to Franklin. And I don't think we're everywhere America. I think we're somewhere America. And how do we define that in words in our mission statement to make it stand out so that hopefully others who may view this mission statement that are stakeholders in our, in our environment can appreciate that this is not fill-in-the-blank town. It's an observation, it's not necessarily directed or guiding, but there you go.
No, no, that's good.
Yeah, but to build off of both what you said and Eric said, I mean, for a city to come out with a mission to be a quality-of-life organization is very different than a lot of, in other words, you couldn't insert another city name in there perhaps. I mean, maybe you could, but I think we could really own that. But I'm with you, we need to, we need to feel like we can't just insert any city name into this mission statement and have it be true. So I think the idea of delivery of those things is probably less unique, but to be that kind of a change, you know, to be that quality of life, that could, I could see where we could build off of that idea of being unique.
So do we want to qualify quality of life in some way? I mean, is that what makes Franklin?
Did you just say how you deliver that is not unique because...
I'm saying just being about delivery of services would not necessarily be unique in and of itself. In and of itself, delivery of, because you can see that a lot in all of these...
I'm not sure I would totally see that because every city has to deliver certain services, quality of life, welfare, health, safety and welfare. I think what's unique a lot of times about Franklin is the way we deliver it, the way we provide for it. So there is probably a little take and give there with that because sometimes we do it
I'm hearing delivery, so I'm just want to kind of put that in here because I'm hearing that. Okay, I would love to hear from some staff. This is your opportunity, guys, jump in. What do you think?
Before you go to staff...
Yeah, please.
I want to say that we are very, very fortunate to have the great fire and police that we have here. And whenever you're talking about safety, those are really keys. And as I say, we are blessed with those two.
Absolutely. When we, when we look at quality of life, right, feeling safe absolutely impacts the quality of life, no question. Staff, don't leave me hanging. Come on here. There we go.
So we have it in the police department's mission statement. It says, "To be a model of professionalism and efficiency in the law enforcement community, reduce crime, enhance safety, and improve the quality of life in our community." So I think whatever any of our mission statements are, it should complement what the city's mission statement is. So I think it's good that we also have that in our mission statement.
Then I'll piggyback off Chief Walker. In the fire department, our, as you say, that's basically three words, service through excellence.
I keep thinking about people first because when you talk about, I just think we're a very relational community. I almost feel like it might be worthy to expand upon the importance of everyone by listing, and it might be too wordy, but when you do it in black and white, you talk about residents, staff, and visitors. I mean, somehow where people feel like, I mean, you can be so broad with that, that you want to be inclusive, but maybe find a way to call out all the recipients of the city. I don't know, that might be too wordy. But somebody feels like they can belong to it regardless of living here or not.
Yeah, no, 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 I hear you. Or maybe even modifying community in some way that we can make it clear that that word is very...
More than just people who...
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Or get a paycheck.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, but then it starts becoming the gap, but...
Yeah. Yeah, it's like, there's always that problem, right? Because when you start naming, you'll always forget somebody who's important, right? So kind of trying to balance that too. Yes?
I just, I keep, I read these and I'm kind of off of what Brandy said. I just feel like the mission is kind of like your why. Would that be right? Was that...
Yeah, yeah. And why you exist.
And like a lot of the, and I think we get like hung up on like, yeah, and then looking at question one, like services and excellence in services and quality of life is in almost all of those and it's, it seems like overused and maybe, like you said, we need to better define it. But I feel like the, the whole crux of it, there are two things that stuck out to me, but it's like centrally focused on the residents and the citizens, right? The, like, the first part is like, I don't know, we exist to serve our citizens, like, so here's the two that stuck out. And then, because I don't have a, I didn't write it down like the mayor, but one of them was provide a platform on which the community may thrive in their personal and professional lives, to offer services that give all residents the opportunity to thrive. Like you think about, and then it's by doing X, Y, Z, what we've talked about here. But like kind of making it initially focused on why we, why city government exists and that's to really provide, I love, I don't know that platform's the word, but like this idea that like everything we do as a city is a foundation for allowing our, like Brandy said, all these other citizens and residents and tourists and businesses and whatever to thrive. Like we exist so that, to provide all the essential services and things that need focused on, like the end goal being that all those citizens, all those constituencies can really thrive in Franklin. So like kind of making that the overarching, but then going into the details or the how we do it.
How do you feel about building a thriving community? Because I feel like we need a modified community in some way.
Thank you. How do you feel about, about a thriving community? Because that's not something that everyone can say, but that is something that Franklin can. And I think that is one of the things that sets you apart.
Could use the word maintain. Stronger word.
It's your mission statement, you can say whatever you want.
So maximizing?
I think, when I think of community, I feel that it encourages each other, encourages each other and things are going bad, like May of 2010 when we had the flood and people just poured into neighborhoods and helped.
I've been thinking about that too, working together, working together, working for our citizens and together with our citizens.
Yep, so we've got a collaborative fashion in here. Is there something you think needs to be added to that? Is there, does that need to be tweaked maybe?
I don't know, for some reason I just like the word together.
Okay.
Working together is more common language.
Yes.
It is...
I mean, I think that's one of the TV slogans, working together for you, right?
Promotion less than your channel.
I would suggest provide high-quality service based on what the fact of the things to its citizens and visitors in a collaborative fashion, kind of building community, comma, and balancing preservation, growth, comma, through strategic investments and building quality, high-quality life, something like that.
I want to ask something real quick. What do you guys think about high-quality versus excellent? We're talking about service delivery.
Exceptional.
Exceptional.
In a different version of this statement, we use the phrase exceptional, responsive, and cost-effective city service.
Because getting back to what Franklin does differently, I think a lot of people provide high-quality. I do think that that's something that you guys pride yourself on is exceptional services. Yes, please?
I think one of the things that we did in the parts department several years back with our mission statement was the, especially with the quality of life, quality of life for all residents of city by the proactively responding, changing demographics and emerging trends while also maximizing all available resources to enhance each resident's health, promote economic vitality, and long-term sustainability now and for the future generations.
Yep, there's a lot packed in there. One of the words I heard though in there I have not heard so far that, and again, this is your submission statement, not mine, but the word proactive is not a word that we've talked about. Is that something?
Any collaborative says proactive. This is another way to say it.
Mayor, can you tell me what you had again?
Do I have to?
All right, do you want me to...
No, I'll do it again. Provide exceptional service in a collaborative fashion, building community, balancing preservation and growth, making strategic investments, and providing exceptional quality of life,
I'm, so what I'm doing is I'm trying to just kind of synthesize some of the things that I have been hearing, strategic excellence. We've got this whole idea of foundation or a platform. Foundation or a platform, yes. So these are some of the themes that I feel like I'm hearing, exceptional service, strategic investments, that excellent quality of life for a thriving community or something like that, that foundation platform. Is there anything that I'm missing? Please, go ahead, Greg.
I don't want to take, but sometimes people at the table make outstanding comments like Glenn. And, and I think that it worked really well to open a window for me to see the delivering exceptional service, building a thriving and resilient community...
Oh.
...while balancing stakeholder interests, preservation and growth. And I think the word resilient, when somebody mentioned the flood, that rushed into my brain, so.
Tell me the, the rest of what you had, the end of that, Greg?
While balancing stakeholder interests, preservation and growth.
Okay.
I love Glenn's three words.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's somewhere in between the three words. That's a great mission statement. There's stuff that like, I think, like you're exactly... Sorry. It's in between where, like, and I think when I, if I'm, you know, on staff or if I'm even thinking in my role, I want to know, like, what are we here for? And like, a couple of these have like a definitive sentence that starts it out. Our mission is to maintain and continue to improve the community, period. We will accomplish this by, our mission is to support a high quality of life in the city, period. We do this through. I just feel like there, that first sentence, I don't like either one of those for us, but I feel like we need to, what is something that we're walking, everybody's walking around, you may not remember the two sentences after that sentence, walking around, but you remember the first sentence.
Yep.
And it's focused on the citizen, it's something focused on, that, that really drives everything home. And I feel like we need that walk around. We need more than just three words for the city.
So here's what I would say. So my strategic planning instructor in grad school said a mission statement should be one breath. So if you can't say it in one breath, it is too long, right? So if you've got to take a breath in between, you got to take some words out of there. But I think sometimes too, like you're trying to balance that brevity, you know? So you want to make it meaningful and impactful, you want, but not making it too long. Yes?
I think some of those up there, you already wrote your own rule there.
Oh, we're not done though yet.
I'm saying that they're...
Oh, we're, we're close.
Read it as fast as you can.
I said right, not br... No. Yeah, and I would, yeah, and that's, and I would say that these are probably, Brandy, to your point, I would agree that these are probably at the max that I would want to see. Yeah, absolutely. Please.
I was just going to add on a little bit, building a thriving community. I think resilience is, was used too, but how about inclusive, a thriving and inclusive
I'm getting a little mixed from that.
So I'll jump in. I had something similar to what Chief was saying over there that Greg communicated. I didn't bring in the stakeholders piece, but I had, we, working on the breath thing. We strive for excellence in the enhancement of services while balancing preservation and progress.
Tell me the first part again?
We strive for excellence in the enhancement of services.
Okay.
We've already used this preservation and progress in the vision, our vision.
Mm-hmm.
I agree. We're done then. Help us with the differentiation.
Well, so I'm not going to lie, I actually, normally I'm not a great, I'm not a big fan of stakeholder interests, but I think in your case, stakeholder interests might actually be inclusive or community or something like that because you guys have got a whole lot of different people that are part of Franklin.
I may not have said this well the last time, so I'll just say it again, especially in the effort of trying to get this to be shorter. There are things that are table stakes for a city to provide. There are things that are table stakes for a city to provide, safety, delivering services. This is not a comment about how good we do it, it's not a comment about the extent of all of the different pieces and parts, but, you know, Ned's sitting here, and Ned as a resident has an expectation that we're going to provide safety, we're going to provide services, we're going to provide economic development for his organization, like, there are table stakes to what we do. This mission's gotta be moving beyond table stakes. It's gotta elevate sort of what we, either how, like, what we do differently, why we do it differently, and I'm not, I don't have the words yet, but that's the part I think we need to kind of cut out of this a little bit.
No, because I mean, essentially what does local government do? It's public health and safety. Like, at its very most elemental level, that is what local government is here to do, and we do it in a bunch of different ways, right? Water's safe, that when you flush the toilet, that stuff goes away, when you, you know, the streets are safe when there's a fire, that somebody comes to take care of, like, that's that public health and safety, the elemental, to your point. But it's, I think what's different in Franklin though is the way it's delivered. Yes?
I'm gonna try something different.
Uh-oh, Eric's out of roll, watch out.
We did ten words for our vision.
All right.
I'm gonna try ten words for the mission.
Uh-oh, watch out.
Try it, let's try it here. Working together, Franklin will thrive through exceptional and responsive service. Trying to simplify.
Say that again?
Working together, Franklin will thrive through exceptional and responsive service. Well, I did a different version that's longer. Working together, the city of Franklin will deliver a superior quality of life through exceptional, responsive, and cost-effective service.
You can't do that to me, I'm halfway through this one, I'm at like seven audio time words, Eric, you're killing me.
Where are you?
Working together, Franklin will thrive.
And, and, and responsive service on that one.
Okay.
I'm trying to do the breath.
Mm-hmm.
I think cost-effective makes it sound sterile here.
And cost-effective isn't in that one.
Oh, okay.
No, so...
I had a longer version that Melissa asked me to read.
Yeah. So the ten words...
I did edit that.
Yeah, the ten words is, working together, Franklin will thrive through exceptional and responsive service. Yes?
Not to nitpick at Eric's statement, but I think the one thing that I had been hearing so much of was community in the discussion, and while there's working together there, I feel like the people element is still not coming to the forefront. It's more about the service to me when I read it, and I just wonder if there's a way to rephrase where it might be more people focused.
Maybe working together, Franklin will provide a thriving community through exceptional and responsive service.
Franklin will...
Will provide.
Will provide a, or foster a thriving community.
Create.
Build, create a thriving community.
Mm-hmm. I think, I think we're a little closer, so here's where we're at right now.
Okay, this is a tweak of this real quick.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The mission statement, starting off with working together, maybe Franklin will support a thriving community, working together. Somehow, like, starting out with that, it just feels a little bit odd when you're talking about your mission statement, I don't know if we could reall, working together, comma, it just doesn't, like, you want to get into the mission, hit the mission, I just feel like we could maybe rearrange.
So you want to, you want to start with who you are, which is Franklin.
We will work together to foster...
Yeah, something like that.
That's great, yeah.
So, tell...
We will work together to foster a thriving community.
Thriving community. That sounds like a mission.
Community through exceptional responsive service, I don't know, I mean, we don't have that, Franklin, yeah, we don't have that, Franklin, we don't work for it.
Okay, we will work together to foster...
A thriving community.
A thriving community through exceptional and responsive, is it service, services? I just want to clarify.
Services, probably.
How about vibrant?
I'm sorry?
Instead of thriving, how about vibrant?
Ooh.
I like vibrant, because it... Halfway, a little bit more maybe?
I was, sorry, forgot about that. I was just writing down some things, this is way too long, but I was thinking, we're a livable, vibrant community. What are we dedicated to? We're dedicated, we're a living vibrant community, dedicated, and again, this is too long, to quality services. Financial strength, preservation, and progress with, I think we're leaving something out, equal representation for all. And that's inclusive, because you brought up a good point there, but I was like, you know, I was shy away from some of those buzzwords, but at the same time, equal representation for all is what a government does.
How about responsive services for all?
Responsible services, yeah, but it's more than services.
Responsive services.
Yeah, but it's more than services.
Okay.
It's equal representation, that people are heard, not just served, but they're heard. So I was thinking, how do you work in equal representation for all?
Right.
Rather than saying we're inclusive, you know, because that, that's a buzzword, it's overused, and people get like, it's a tired word actually, so...
It starts out, we will work together.
Yeah. So, but I like the word vibrant, and what are we dedicated to? You know? Quality services, I think financial strength is one of our key points in our city, and then preservation and progress, we can be, we can focus on preservation, but progress as well.
I think exceptional and responsive services applies to everything we do.
Mm-hmm. So here's what I would like to do, what I would like to do, I am going to rewrite this So the good news about doing this in multiple sessions is you get to know a little bit about the work, the group that you're working with, and what I have learned about this group is that sometimes we are better off starting, stopping, letting everybody's creative juices go for a little bit, and then picking it back up later. So I feel like we have made a lot of really good progress, and I feel like we're really close. I want to stick a pin in this for a little bit, we're gonna go ahead and move on, probably tomorrow, because I think, like, I think we're probably 15 minutes away from having this nailed down, but I don't know if we try to push it tonight if it's gonna be 15 minutes. Does that, am I reading the room right? Does that make sense? Okay. So what I'm kind of getting from the conversations that we've had is, we are leaving here with... And I want to say, I hear what you're saying, I'm just not sure how to include it yet, so let's, yeah, 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 so let's do that, let's do that. But this is what we kind of have for right now, what we kind of have right now.
Work together, is that right?
Yeah, we will, I'm sorry, oh, oh, come on. You want all of my words in there? Come on, yep, we will work together.
Slightly over ten, we'll be okay.
Yep, we'll work together to foster a vibrant community through exceptional and responsive services. That's where we are right now, we're gonna stick a pin in it, because I feel like the energy's going like this, and I don't want to do that, so we're gonna stick a pin in it, and we'll come back. Next slide, we're gonna zip on through for a little bit, all right. Hey, strategic plan, anybody want to do a strategic plan?
Yeah.
Next one, please. All right, so I want to talk a little bit about governing body, staff. Governing body owns things like purpose, direction, policy, right? That's really what the goal is. Staff owns things like implementation, action plans, methods. Those are the goals, this is how we're gonna get there, the staff owns that. But there's some place where there's a little bit of ownership that's shared in the middle, and that has to do with things like perspectives, looking at things. Elected officials and staff may have slightly different perspectives on things. How are we defining success, creation, and then some accountability? Next slide. Guys, love my airplane graphic, I know you do, but this is, again, we're kind of talking about that purpose and vision, strategic goals. So we're gonna start talking about strategic goals tonight. When we start talking about strategic goals, we are towards the left, right? We actually have slightly more staff in here than we do elected officials, but when we have conversations, just kind of keep in mind, when we start talking tomorrow about kind of how we're gonna, you know, do some things, that's gonna be more, we're really going to be listening a little bit more to staff, we're kind of thinking more about goals, we really want to make sure that we're really intentionally listening to the board because this is more towards their end of responsibility. Next slide. Strategic planning process, five questions, where are we now, where do we want to be, how do we get there from here, and how are we gonna know when we get there? Also, are there changes in the future external environment that we need to consider? So two, top two of those are with plan development, and so we're gonna be covering those. I am not going to read all of this, there's just a couple of things that I want to point out real quick. Where are we now? We're gonna talk about strategic challenges, that's what we're going to be doing through the rest of today. Where are we going? That's a lot of what we've been doing, right? What's our vision, our mission, our values, and then that's also gonna tie into some outcomes. Next slide, please. And then implementation, again, this is gonna be more driven by staff, but it's just important for everybody to kind of know the way that these two work together, right? Doing things like performance measures, targets and thresholds, cascading through the organization, that's gonna be more on staff, that implementation part of it, but we will be discussing that a little bit during today and tomorrow. Next slide, please. So you kind of think about it, we've got the stakeholder input, we go to the plan development, that's really where we're gonna be spending today and tomorrow, and then again, all of that on the bottom, that is all having to do with staff, including, and I want to talk about this for a second because this is, sometimes some of the stuff is a little bit underneath the waterline, it's not just what we're going to do, but then staff really takes it, and this is where it really gets built out, right? And this is where it really goes into the organization. So when I was a 911 dispatcher, I felt completely disconnected from the organization that I worked with. I really believe a good strategic plan, everybody, people may choose not to get involved in it, totally get that, but they should at least understand how they can if they choose to. There should be a clear path because of the fact that it's been cascaded well. Next slide. You can actually measure strategy, there's a woman named Stacy Bauer, if anybody's interested in it, she's fabulous, but it's everything from we don't have a strategy at all to, next Documented strategy with goals, objectives, and supportive vision and directives. You guys may have heard me talk about weasel words, if not, you'll hear a little bit more about it, things like efficient, effective, reliable quality, you can't measure things like that without putting something with it that is measurable. So as we're measuring progress, we can't measure using weasel words. We're gonna want to have clear words with no ambiguity, that everybody understands, it's very clear, got the same understanding. Next slide. We are not gonna spend a lot of time here, but I do think it's important to cover. Culture and value, what is a city as a place, what is it now, and then what do we want it to be, as a place to live and also as an organization for providing services and maintaining public safety? Next slide. So how an organization delivers value, and this is pretty standard stuff when it comes to strategy, they really, this has been researched extensively, really kind of comes down to three disciplines, and it doesn't matter what kind of organization you have. This is public, private, academic, really anything, that there's kind of three ways that you could deliver value, operational excellence, product service leadership, or customer intimacy. Everyone, to be a successful organization, you have to maintain a minimal amount of competency. You can't be terrible at any of these and have a well-functioning organization, but you probably excel in one, or maybe you've got two that are kind of close. Next slide, please. So how do these work? Operational excellence. Operational excellence, they adjust to us. I fly Southwest Airlines a lot, I was on Southwest just yesterday. Southwest airline, you go, you get your boarding pass, I was A-52, what does that mean? That means I line up behind 51 other people to get on the airplane. Why does Southwest do it?
They're gonna stop doing it.
Exactly. They're gonna stop doing it, and I am aware of that, yep, yep. But the reason why they do it is because, it's for, it's because operational efficiency, and they are able to keep lower costs as a result. They turn planes around faster because by getting everybody on according to those boarding groups, rather than having people look for their own seat, you get everybody on, you get them off, you turn them quicker. That is operational excellence. Walmart, what do they do? Walmart, you know, they go through, they control a lot of the things, again, it's about cost efficiency, operational efficiency. Product service leadership, Apple, Google, remember the days when the iPhones came out and everybody waited in line because they wanted to have the new iPhone, right? Why do you do that? Because they were product service leadership. With that, that is when you want to have it just because it's the newest and the coolest. Last one, customer intimacy, Nordstrom, Brits Carlton, something like that, where they get to know you on an individual level, and it's about satisfying your needs as an individual, regardless of what it costs in terms of time. So what does this look like in the public sector? Public sector, my favorite example is trash, because everybody could understand trash, right? What it looks like is operational excellence, I'm gonna be, the garbage people are going to be around on Tuesday at 8:00 AM to pick up your garbage. If your garbage is out there at 8:05, we will see you next week, it's been fun. That is operational excellence, there is no adjusting. We are on a schedule, and you adjust to us. Right? Product service leadership.
They always call up, hey, they miss me.
Product service leadership, what does that look like? Product service leadership when it comes to trash is, so normally we come around and we'll pick it up at 8:00 AM on Tuesday. We also have sensors in all the garbage cans, and so we know if they start getting a little fuller, we'll just make a special midweek trash run because we don't want you to have any sort of difficulties and have it, too much trash. That's what product service leadership looks like, right? What does customer intimacy look like? Customer intimacy looks like, community I worked with, the garbage would, actually, they would go, they would park in front, they would go into your garage, they would pull the garbage out, they would wheel it down, they would then bring it back and put it in the exact same spot. I don't know what your method is of garbage collection here, but that was what they had there. But that is probably the three best ways to explain it. The other is, we had a nice storm that came through last night, think about if you have a tree limb come down, right? So if you think about this, what's operational excellence? Hey, Mrs. Smith, thanks for letting us know, tree limb down in the parkway, agreed, our responsibility, we're gonna have crews around in the next couple of weeks, it'll be gone sometime soon. As soon as, as soon as it's kind of your turn in that rotation, we'll get it picked up. Product service leadership, Mrs. Smith doesn't even call because the drones already know that the tree limb is down, and they've already been out to pick it up. And what does customer intimacy look like? You know what, Mrs. Smith, we were already down the street working on something completely unrelated, but we know that... that this is in your yard. We'll just have them come back on their way back in and take care of it for you because we don't want you to be inconvenienced. Those are what those three things look like in the public sector. So here's a question. What does it look like in Franklin? Okay, so what does this look like in Franklin? So that is customer intimacy. That is customer intimacy. This would be out if it was like more on the parkway, right? So I'm talking about more if it's, it's towards the street. I'm not talking about yet. Yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, no, no, absolutely. Certainly a safety thing would be a little bit different. But again, kind of down in the parkway really is kind of the city's responsibility, but how soon is the city going to come around?
But we have dead deer on our road all the time. And people will call and it's gone within a few hours. So I think customer intimacy is really one of our highlights here.
So staff, this is time for staff participation as well. A lot of times, there can be a little bit of tension between expectations and what constraints there are in the real world. Do you guys see any, are there any tensions between these three value propositions? Any staff? Don't make me pick on staff. I don't want to have to pick on staff.
I do have one other story about service, you know, about Franklin Streets Department. Subcontractor was repaving, repaving a neighborhood, damaged a mailbox, citizen calls, and the first part of the conversation is, well, we'll let the subcontractor know. No, we won't. We will come out and fix it ourselves.
Yep, yep. Again, that customer intimacy. Yeah. Well, and so that's...
How much are we now? Ninety.
Well, and that's part of the reason why I'm asking about these tensions because I'm...
So we have to keep evaluating and saying, you know, can we continue to keep levels of service where they are now when we're 120,000? And how do we do that?
So I once worked for a community that had extremely high expectations for customer intimacy. I had an older gentleman who wanted to be able to pay his water bill using his credit card, but he didn't understand how to do it. So he would come in every month and I would sit down with him at a computer and walk him through the process of accessing his water bill online so he could then put in his credit card information. That is a very high level of customer intimacy, but there is a time component to that. So that was probably 15 minutes of my life, once a month, so that he could get credit card points, but that was a priority for that community. Staff, are you guys feeling any tension as Franklin grows? Between, yes, and I'm sorry, please.
And again, not necessarily speaking for staff, but observationally, we thrive on customer intimacy. And I think that's one of the great things that we have. But I think that when we hit this tipping point of customer intimacy, it becomes operationally inefficient because we're short-staffed. We can't get people there. And it can create stressors on those that are citizen-facing, trying to get there. So I think that, you know, when we look at these three, as much as we strive and want customer intimacy like we're describing, I think that's the part maybe that might not be verbalized right now, and maybe Eric's even going to add to that as well.
That's pretty good. That's kind of where I was going to. But I mean, I think that absolutely there's a tension. And, and that the word we used, exceptional service, is kind of something we are driven by, but that is a moving target. And so it's always kind of ratcheting up and we want to be as responsive as we can to the call that comes in. But there's also, there is a point at which it is inefficient and potentially counterproductive to the rest of the community we're trying to serve. And so we struggle with when to make that call. And that that's going to come across to the rest of the board and the rest of the community that that's the right call to, to balance that. Because we do, we want to, we want to impress everybody we work with.
Yep.
Every citizen we work with. But sometimes that is not realistic because of the, the other 90,000 people we got to serve. Yeah, I mean, there is a financial reality, but we don't always drive it by what's the most efficient way because we want to have the intimacy and the, you know, the wow factor of wow, look what they did for me.
Yeah.
And we want that. Well, that's part of why all of us got into this.
Right. Staff, you guys can leave me hanging. Come on. There we go. I got a brave soul there in the back.
I think it's wonderful you chose trash to talk about, but yeah, that's a conversation we're currently having with the board.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're going to step through a discussion coming up here in a, in a work session real soon. But yeah, there definitely can be tension. You know, we want to serve the public as, as best as we possibly can, but we do have limitations in terms of resources. We also have limitations in terms of what our policies are. So it's always kind of that, you know, how do you, how do you keep moving the ball forward and doing well? And, you know, so that's, but yeah, there can be tension. So I want to point that out.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, so in public safety, I know in fire service, customer intimacy is what we're doing. We're going to them in their time of need to solve their problem or fix whatevers, you know, they have going on at that particular time. And sometimes that conflict with operational excellence, there's a little, there's a rub factor there.
Yeah.
Because we, the community says, we want this. How do we continue to make this happen as we grow as a community?
And I think particularly as communities grow, I think that tension sometimes, the community I worked for had 2,000 people. Customer intimacy is a little bit easier in a community of 2,000 than of 90,000. Go ahead, please.
I also think it's a culture thing, though. I think as we grow and we bring in new team members, it's like, it's on us to set the expectation. And I think that, I mean, I don't even know what department to pick on. There's going to be some departments, like you're going to have somebody who that's a natural, for them, it's natural to do the intimacy piece. For others, it's like, no, man, you take that, I'll sit in the truck. I mean, it just varies. But I think it's upon us to build that culture and that expectation of treat people like you would want to be treated.
Right, right. And again, you can't be deficient in any of these three, right? We, we need to make sure that we've got a healthy balance and a good culture. Absolutely. Please.
So two things I want to comment on. One is, when you look at these companies right here, too, I think they deliver on this, but they know when they've got a concern or issue, there's good communication, good interactive communication, where they know they've got maybe different ways to communicate to that organization, and they can do that successfully and quickly. And I feel like we have that here. There's always ways to improve that. But I think with our communications team here, you know, we, we give them options to get with, and then so the expectation then is to be responsive, even if, even if it's a thing we can't, you know, I'm sorry, I can't get there for a week. With somebody being able to express that, get ahold of somebody right now, get the runaround, and they get to express the concern, that, that relieves a lot. You know, it alleviates a lot of the frustration that people have. So number one, when somebody reaches out, we have to get back with them very, very quickly. Number two, listen and hear them out. Don't jump to any conclusions. Hear them out and then explain. And if it's a thing about priorities, we can't get to the customer intimacy due to other commitments, just explain what the, what the process is. Why, you know, if it's snow removal, well, we're going to, we're going to plow the major arterials first because that's where most of the traffic is, and then we'll come to some secondary route. So if, as long as you explain it to people that way, they may give you, have some flexibility and be reasonable about it. The other thing is, two, setting level of service standards, too. And being consistent with that goes a long ways. Now, when you set those, and that comes at a cost, it comes at dedicating resources. So if you want a higher level of service, sometimes you've got to do a trade-off analysis. So you have to keep that in mind. But I think for level of service, if you, in some areas, you can communicate that to the public and help to set that expectation, and then you can just refer to it and have consistency across the board. I think that helps a lot. But we want to have some flexibility, like this is what we do, and sometimes we can exceed that where we can.
Sure.
But I think when you're transparent about the desire, you know, level of service and what we budget for and what the resources we have, I'll go back to the winter operations for just a moment. We can't plow every single road in the network. This is not like in the Northeast where they plow all the neighborhoods.
Right.
We've decided we want to put some resources elsewhere. We need to have adequate number of fire trucks, police vehicles, other essential equipment, trash trucks. We want to have enough of those so we do a little bit of a trade-off and say, well, we're not going to have this many snowplow trucks, but we'll have more of these other things.
Right.
So balancing your priorities. But that's two areas, communication, just to sum it up, communication, and then defining that level of service, I think are critical. And then in looking at these, some departments are going to lean more one way or the other. But I think we do a little bit of all of this.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Got to have those minimum levels. So I don't want to spend any time, more time on this, but I did at least want to open up because again, there is that tension that I think does wind up coming across.
One last thing on, Brandy brought up about the culture, which is to me the key. Because if you look at operational excellence, product services, leadership, customer intimacy, this guy over here is running the day-to-day operations. And this guy over here is running the board. And the board, we're the people responsible to set the culture and give those messages no matter if we're 43,000 or 90,000. So it's our responsibility to make sure that what we want out of all this, that we continue to find ways to set that culture.
Thank you. And with that, we are going to keep on going. Good conversation. Thank you. So we're going to skip right on by because we've already covered this pretty well, I think. And this is just kind of something to think about as we do this. And this is something that Franklin does very well, but I think it's just a challenge for local government always. Local government tends to be paramilitary, right? I grew up in public safety. And if you have an emergent issue, you have to know who's in charge because you have to get the right people there at the right time and you have to know who you're asking questions to, right? You have to have it as a picket fence because people's lives are involved. But ordinarily, you really do a whole lot more when you've got more of that chain link fence. So what we're going to do, starting today and into tomorrow, we are going to be doing more of the chain link fence. Why? Because different perspectives really are very helpful in looking at things in different ways. The example that I'm going to give you real quick is when I was a dispatcher, I would periodically get a call, hey Cory, we've had a whole bunch of traffic accidents lately. So we're going to run extra units between this intersection and that intersection on this road. And I write a whole bunch of traffic tickets. Because there was this assumption that traffic tickets were associated with people speeding. And that was the lever that they pulled. It was only having to do with speed of cars. So they wrote tickets. Now, if we're looking at a roadway that is particularly dangerous, that we're getting more accidents in, there's a lot of other things we work, we look at. What else are we looking at? This is participation time. What else are we going to look at? Police are probably still going to be involved, but who else is going to be out there looking at this as well? Traffic engineer. What's a traffic engineer going to look at? Signage, yes. Accident counts, how much traffic is going through. Yep, yep.
Streets Department would go out there and look at and see, you know, is that road, you know, is it a little too slick? Do we need to go out there and repave a section now instead of doing it later?
Are there any hazards? Is there maybe some visibility issues out there? So we now look at that through a variety of different issues. That's why the chain link fence is important. Because we're not just looking at it anymore from just a law enforcement point of view. By looking at it through a bunch of different perspectives, we're able to make a lot more headway on it. Next slide. We are going to do this, you guys all know Cory's rule. Cory never clocks more than 90 minutes at a time. We are at 69. So we are going to take a 10-minute break, and then we will come back to jump into the SWOT analysis. So it is 6:09. You have until 6:19. You may recall that you were asked to take a SWOT questionnaire, which we actually had very good response to. I think we wound up with 29 out of 39 was the total. So I was, I was, it wasn't perfect, but we got about three quarters. These were the five questions. So just to give you a chance to review. Next slide, please. This is going to be our next thing. Those of you who love small group exercises, you're going to love me in about three minutes. Those of you who don't, you're going to hate my guts. You already had your break. So here is what we're going to do. I am going to divide you into groups in a minute, but I want to talk to you a little bit about what the next step in this is. You are going to go through, the reason why you did this is because our next step, this is a data analysis exercise. We have got bullet points. They are divided between elected officials and staff because sometimes perspectives are a little bit different. What I want you to go through is if you are in, for example, the strengths group, you are simply going to combine similar statements. The easiest way I have found to do it is just to go ahead and be, look and say, you know, hey, a strength is, you know, we have great finances, we're going to make that A. And, you know, we have a beautiful community. I'm going to make all statements having to do with that B, right? Just find some sort of organizational system to combine similar statements. Then I want you to go through and look, how often are some of these things being said? What are some of the big themes that are coming through? And is it coming out more from staff, more from electeds, or is it pretty balanced between the two? You are then going to discuss this with your group. So you're going to work independently, you're going to think through the themes, and then you're going to discuss with your group. Your group then is going to come up with a list of themes out of that. Figure probably eight to 10 out of your particular group. And then someone is going to come up and present it to the group. I will warn you in advance, the person who, if you have bad handwriting and you're the one who writes it, you are automatically going to be nominated to be the person to write, to present. So just know that going in. So is everybody clear about what we're doing? Combine similar statements, prioritize it. What are you hearing the most often? Discuss with your group. Come up with eight, 10 themes to present to everybody else. What we're doing is that we're doing this as a data analysis. Now, here's the thing. You're all going to start out with one thing. You will be able to see everything. So I'm going to get everybody started. I will pass it around later. So everyone will be able to see everything, but I do want you to start prioritizing on just your thing. Are we clear? We all good? Okay. With that, I'm now going to test your ability to count to four. Elected officials. One. One. And that should be everybody. Okay. So remember what number you are elected officials. I'm now going to do staff. I'm now going to do staff.
One, two, three.
Four.
See, one.
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 You and I are ready.
It is your ability to count to four, that's what the test is. Okay, so we've got one here.
Very advanced.
Exactly. So we've got one here.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Four.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
One.
Three.
All right. If you are a one, you are going to be here and you are strengths. If you are a two, you will be there, you are weaknesses. Three will be there, you are opportunities. Four is here and is threats. All right, Eric.
All right, so we, we had strengths and we're proud to say that was the longest list. So that was exciting. That was good. So we identified 10 different themes, primary themes, and we tried to prioritize them and did our little tick marks to also make sure we were capturing the most frequently mentioned. Within strengths, the most frequently mentioned was dedicated professional quality staff. We added the term award-winning, that was a nice one we threw in there. Number two, probably fairly close second, was strong financial base. And that had implications for both how we're, our financial management, but also our tax base. Item three, strong leadership, elected and appointed staff as well as folks on our commissions. So strong leadership there. Our fourth was a collaborative culture. So just, we sort of summarized a whole group that talked about working together, working with the community and with one another. High level of service, specifically public safety, was identified by a number of folks, but also just overall city services at a high level. Then we get into kind of a group that have some similar themes, so we ended up kind of grouping them at the end. But the idea of community character, both our history and the quality of development overall and the built environment, economic vitality, and just our geographical location has benefits. So those together really kind of make a, an area of, of strength. And then other areas, I talked about community partnerships, being open to adapt, technology and innovation. We saw a number of variations on that theme. So those are our top 10 with strong staff, strong leadership, strong financial base being the real lead ones. We saw a lot of, a lot of consistent messaging on, on terms of strengths.
So quick question, did you see any differences between staff and elected officials when you were going through?
Not really.
Okay, so it's pretty equal.
Pretty consistent. There, just because there were more from staff overall, there might be a little more nuance in some of those, but really the themes pretty much held up throughout.
Does anybody else have any questions of the strengths group? And feel free to go ahead, everybody has now got those if you want to take a quick look at it. Do we have any questions? Do we feel like there's anything that maybe should be up here? You have any question how they categorize that? Leaving Eric on the hot seat here just for another minute or so. All right, let's give group one a hand, nicely done.
Great.
All right, weaknesses. Who's coming up for that?
You have unanimous nominations. Well, we were busy.
Greg, start off strong.
I will start off.
Greg, do you mind coming up here with that so everybody can see? Thank you.
Yeah, we've already done it wrong.
First weakness, following direction.
Yeah, and asking me to. So these are not in order of frequency, but I'll, I'll define them in order of frequency. The most consistent weakness that was identified predominantly by staff, unanimously by staff, was a disconnect or communication from either staff to leadership, or leadership to staff, or board to leadership, or board to staff. And that was referenced 22 times as the number one weakness. The second was what we defined as policy disconnects. It started out as innovation or flexibility or inability to be flexible, which we categorized as policy restrictions. And that was referenced 15 times by both staff and the city elected officials. The third, we had kind of a tie, three-way tie with five marks each for infrastructure, which was predominantly our roads or streets, which are the same thing, or city, other city infrastructure. In addition to that, we had revenue and, and tax base, more want than funding. And the final was facilities, predominantly was city hall related.
I don't understand why.
Yeah. New city hall related. And then, and then finally was housing was listed exclusively by elected officials three times.
What was the solution to housing? Housing, what respect?
Finding solutions for workforce of affordable housing, workforce and affordable housing, and there was one other one that I'm.
It did show up in staff.
High cost of housing.
Yep, high cost of housing, one on staff side. Yep, one, one on staff, that was it.
Any other questions for the group that was looking at weaknesses? All right, give them a hand. Opportunities.
I know, I'm just.
All right, so our group was the opportunities. And the great thing about, that we saw about opportunities is there was a lot of overlap between what the elected officials said and the staff said. So we just ranked the top 10 as we saw them. So the first, we had technology as it's ever advancing, we can advance alongside it. Then we had our new city hall that's coming and improved facilities across the city. Collaboration and teamwork, economic growth and capacity, managing and balancing the growth that we're seeing. Public-private partnerships between the city and any private agency. And it also fed in a lot to the community, which we have on a later point. Recruitment and organizational structure, which is continuing to grow as well. Quality of life, destination, kind of having a vibrant community like we talked about back with the mission statement. The community engagement and investments in our people, our infrastructure, and I think that's resources?
I don't know.
Yeah. So that, that's the opportunities. And like I said, they were kind of well-matched between the staff and elected officials.
Can you help me understand a little bit, what, what was kind of under community engagement? What kind of comments were you seeing under that?
Uh, just.
And group, you can help out.
Yeah. I think, I think it related a lot to, to services and kind of being engaged with the community and really responsive to the needs.
Okay, okay, excellent. Any questions for the opportunities group? Want any further clarification on anything? All right, give them a hand. I do want to note that the strengths, that the strengths group put up the city manager and the opportunities group put up the brand-new.
I'm here for the threats. All right.
Day is a menacing tone.
Yes. It was a dark and stormy night. No, the threats, we had a great team, good job team four. But we had some interesting themes, but one threat, and these are in no specific order, although I do have some counts that, that Alderman Blanton.
I'll say it when you're done.
Yeah. So housing, so there was a theme among both elected officials and staff about lack of housing, affordability of housing, employees living and affording to live in the city. Then there was quite a few about traffic and infrastructure, and we kind of grouped those together, the threats of whether that be infrastructure or growth outpacing infrastructure and just in general, providing infrastructure without the utility. I believe utilities was mentioned in here as well, maybe that was another one. But infrastructure is a threat, lack of it, and not getting ahead of it. Growth strategy and management, there was a fair amount of that, which was ranged from anywhere from, let's see, not effectively defining our growth strategy, too fast, growing too fast, residents' perceptions of growth, and growth outpacing infrastructure, which was kind of a combo. So growth and growth strategy and management. Culture, climate and community, culture, climate and community, that's not like climate as in the weather, but just the climate of our community. And so that kind of encompassed a number of things. So I'll just read a couple of them. One was small business nonprofits, ability to remain in the community, small-town feel, shifting political climate. There's a number of comments on here, threats on political climates, being different and changing in our local political environment. Polarization, let's see, resistance to change, and then politics pretty much summed up a majority of probably that culture and climate kind of section. Safety and security, we also lumped in a number here that was E, that was cybersecurity was the number, one that came up a couple of times. Public safety, not shifting, excuse me, public safety pressures beyond just pay. So I guess threats, meaning as we grow, public safety, needs of our community changing and possibly being a threat. Moving on, financial fiscal, we had a number of these. One, which was pressure to depart from conservative fiscal and debt policy, budget constraints, use tax dependency, so just threats on our financial model that is a strength, but, you know, that being a threat. State overregulation was one that also showed up, various oversights and laws that the state gives us that we have to work within and how that might change the way we operate. And leadership and employment, and this was kind of one where we kind of had to lump some stuff together. And there was some that was more internal, that felt like was staff responses, more about the internal kind of threats of the, the organization. But then there were also some, for instance, becoming a city where our current key employers don't seek the value in staying located here because the talent is elsewhere. Let's see, H, there's employee motivation, retainment, there are recruitment, fear of criticism, limited vision, not being open to new ideas. And some of these kind of crossed over internal threats, but also I think external that could be applied. There was some interesting differences between staff and Alderman as well. I mean, the political, the culture, climate and community was pretty much exclusively the staff had that, that threat concerned. And so I did not see, well, there was one elected official maybe that had that, that as a, as a threat. But there was, it was predominantly on the staff side, which I thought is interesting.
That is very interesting.
Because obviously it's a concern to our, how we do business, right, in our climate.
I sat here and counted them all out, and it looks like our two biggest threats. Number one, being the culture of our community. That had 14. And the other one was leadership and employment. Everything else was about the same, five to six different things. So culture of our community was the highest threat.
Any questions for this group? You're trying to run away from me. Any questions for the group? Eric, yes, please.
I saw the word complacency, Reshod, where does that lie in that?
We put that in.
Leadership.
Yeah. Yeah, that was like one of those, didn't really know if that was like internal, like, like city organizational complacency, because it was on the staff, I believe that was mostly on the staff. We didn't know if that was. So we put that under, yeah, leadership and employment. I don't know if, again, since we don't know exactly what the motivation behind it was, it could be also complacency with how we're looking at things in the community, but something to dig into.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions for that group? Give them a hand. All right, now here's what we're gonna do. We are going to combine groups. So we are going to have strengths and opportunities. You guys look really comfy over here. We're gonna put strengths and opportunities over here. And we are going to put weaknesses and threats over here. Can you go to the next slide? So you're gonna see, he's putting the slide. So what we're gonna do is we are going to combine, again, we're looking for things, think about it as kind of areas of overlap, or where one may kind of feed the other. So strengths and opportunities, these are kind of attributes, right? Where do we, might we have some strengths that can help us take advantage of opportunities? Thank you very much. My multitasking is not nearly as good anymore. Weaknesses and threats, we are gonna be looking at things, pretty much strategic challenges. What we want to do is that we want to be thinking about how can we minimize weaknesses, avoid threats, and particularly if there's any places where we think our weaknesses may actually intensify the threat. So again, we're kind of looking for some places where there is some overlap between the two. So this is an opportunity for those groups to have some conversations. You're probably going to want to stand and kind of talk about it. Don't make everybody who is in the group moving over, sit down, guys. But the same kind of a thing. We want to be kind of looking for some themes that are coming out of this. Again, strengths and opportunities, what attributes do we have? What kind of positive things do we have moving forward? Weaknesses and strengths, what kind of strategic challenges are we seeing that are coming out of the weaknesses and threats? What kinds of weaknesses do we need to minimize? What kinds of threats do we need to avoid? We're looking for, again, probably about eight total. I will give you guys, it is 7:12, so let's start with about 20 minutes and see where you're at. Weaknesses and threats over here, strengths and opportunities over here. All right. We're ready for this, it will be on the table. Guys, strengths and opportunities are ready to go. Bev and Jason, take it away.
All right.
There we go.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. Welcome back from your fabulous break. It's now 7:36 Central time. This is my, my, my great counterpart right here, Bev Burger, AKA Vanna White, who's serving for strengths and opportunities. And then collectively, our two great teams were able to deduce and create these partnerships between strengths and opportunities. So I'll just walk down them. We have, and Bev's gonna take strengths and I'll do the opportunity side. So what we're looking for is the solution for the opportunity by using the strengths. So number nine is on that side.
Is open to and willing to adapt technology and innovation.
All right, and our opportunity here, of course, was technology. All right, we'll go to the next one, number six and number 10.
Six is community, community character and history and location.
Excellent. And what we're addressing with that is number eight, which is quality of life, and this is destination, vibrant community. And then we have a 10C for investments into residence. And so then we move down to the next one, which is our strengths, our number one and number four.
Dedicated professional quality staff, award-winning.
Number four.
And number four is collaborative culture.
And what that addresses is number three here for opportunities, which is collaboration and teamwork. And we called that collaboration and people. And for everybody watching at home, the first one was technology and innovation, the second one was destination and community. Yes, I'll attest at the end of this. And now we'll move down to our fourth one, this is number eight.
Which is community partnerships.
Thank you. And this addresses the two opportunities, which is number six, public and private partnerships, as well as community engagement. And we summarized that one here with community partnerships. We move down to the next one, this is number two and number seven on strengths.
Two is strong financial base, and number seven, economic vitality.
Thank you. Those two strengths address number four, which is economic growth and capacity, as well, managing and balancing. well managing and balancing growth, and 10B down here for investments into infrastructure. And collectively, we call this financial economic strength. We move down to the next, next to last, number three and number five.
Would be strong leadership, elected staff, and community appointees, and high level of public safety and other services.
Excellent. And those two strengths address two opportunities here, this is number seven, which is recruitment and organizational structure, and it also addresses investments into people, and that is human capital. And last but not least, number 11 on strengths.
Number 11 was physical assets.
Excellent. Addresses the opportunity, which is number two, which is city hall and facilities, and collectively, we put this together and call this quality assets. And for those at home, if you don't get this one, you can find a rain bucket anywhere around city hall right now, and get to know that one. So, that wraps up all of our strengths and opportunities. We turn the floor back over to you, ma'am.
Are they, for delivery alone, that was great. Any questions for the strengths and opportunities group? All right, we are going to head over here to weeks, weaknesses and threats, and they were really kind of looking at some strategic challenges. So take it away.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, she might, she needs, here. I think she needs that mic. We're going to have her talk. So we began, we began by identifying correlation amongst the threats and the weaknesses. In our mind, weaknesses was present, threats are pending. Infrastructure showed up, communication gap showed up in spades. It was important for us to identify this as an internal communication gap that included leadership and employment. In addition to that, we talked about the culture or climate and our community, and that was external challenges due to shifting culture and climate, not relative to the temperature, but more societal climates. Growth strategy, we talked under growth strategy, and these may become standalone topics as we dig further into this. Infrastructure and housing, infrastructure being roads, sewer and services, housing being predominantly affordable housing options for not only folks who want to live here, but also folks who want to work and live here in the city. Financial and fiscal was around taxes and our ability or lack thereof to accomplish some of our things due to our revenue and budget. And then finally was bureaucracy, and this one took us a while to get to. This bureaucracy category in... Because we couldn't, we figured out how to spell bureaucracy, and while spelling it, we defined it as policies, both internal and external challenges due to bureaucracy or red tape. So external would be more state-related, internal would be internal policies or processes or procedures.
But do you have anything for everybody watching at home?
Well, for the home audience, I would like to say, first off, thank you for watching. We didn't consider that a threat, our home audience potentially leaving and going to another community event. Thank you for pointing. Excellent job.
Okay, excellent job. Big hand for this group. Any questions for them about any of these things? I want to just point out something that came from conversation. Infrastructure actually is kind of in two places there. They were talking, there's both a maintenance, I think, kind of component to it, as well as a growth component to infrastructure. So it was, there was kind of a discussion that they should be combined or not, and that's why it wound up being separate. Anything, any other questions on that?
Can someone check and see if there are any questions from the home viewing audience?
All right, you guys know Cory's rule, never more than 90 minutes, and we're getting close, so let's take an eight-minute break. It is 7:43, so you've got until 7:51. All right, so this is the last thing that we are going to do today. We are going to talk through what crossover we have seen, what strategic issues have come out of this SWOT analysis. I'm leaving them on both sides of the room, just because there's no good place to put them in front, but let's start talking through some of the strategic challenges that have come out of the SWOT analysis. And I will start making a list up here. Strategic issues.
We're just picking some that we like?
Yeah, well, the, no, 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 off of the, what we've done so far. You're not looking at the three things quite yet, that's the last step, I just want to make sure you've got it. But out of what we have done so far, what are some of our strategic issues?
Infrastructure.
A road.
Aligning infrastructure and growth.
Money, 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 money.
Money, all right. Aligning infrastructure and growth, money, what else? What other, I'm sorry?
Housing.
Housing. Talk to me about capacity. Okay, staff capacity, service delivery, capacity is a strategic issue. What else?
I'm going to add, I think that aligning infrastructure and growth is there, but I think also just our growth strategy, like our overall, you know, we just did a mission Franklin, so we've got, we've got one. But I think communicate, like just communicating that growth strategy effectively, adhering to that growth strategy, and then aligning the infrastructure to that strategy.
Yep, so, can I, so it's like growth strategy implementation? Like, do you have a strategy? I don't know how far you are, so it's a question.
You do have a growth strategy.
Okay.
We just finished up, but I think it's, the strategic issue is maybe the public perception of the growth strategy, us communicating the growth strategy, us adhering to the growth strategy, supporting the growth strategy.
Okay.
There's a, when you see all these growth comments, it's because we hear about this in the community. And I think, I'll yell.
I'll go.
No, it's not. But I think, I think that we would be missing the mark if we just said that the issue, the strategic issue is the infrastructure and growth alignment. It's, I think there is this strategic issue with getting everyone on the same page as to what our growth strategy is, and how we're implementing it, and how we're actually doing what the community wants. I think that is a huge strategic issue, or else we're going to be fighting that misperception of what our strategy is.
Yeah, yeah.
And all of this is, we're going to be behind the eight ball, because we've got a great growth strategy now. It's just, there's a disconnect, and I think it's a huge strategic issue.
So, if I put down communicated and implemented, does that, at least for right now, kind of, we can, we can dial in a little bit later, but does that pretty much capture it?
I think so, yeah.
What other strategic issues do we have?
Financial.
I saw Michael Walker, I knew everything he had.
Okay.
For your viewers that don't...
So tell me what you mean by policy.
So, let me give an example about a policy. Connectivity. We have a policy of connectivity, but if we hear too much, oh, I don't want these people through my neighborhood, then we back off, or we don't want to connect. And so when we have policies, if we don't, on a regular basis, pretty much follow them, there's no sense to have a policy. So, strategic issue to me with growth strategies are policies, that if we're going to have the policies, we need to follow them.
Okay.
Because just for like connectivity, roads are built by all taxpayer dollars, they're built for vehicles, they're not built for children to go out and play on, or if you're a dog to run on. They're built for cars.
Okay.
And so, we hear the opposite, like, we don't want traffic, or this has been a quiet street, we don't want more traffic through it, but that's what roads are for. So we have policies. So where does a policy, where does policy fit into that? Because we have strategies for everything else, but you're talking about strategic issues.
Yep, and so I'm...
Those are important, policies are important.
No, 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 absolutely, because policies are what guide you, right? And so...
That was just one example.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah, no, 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 absolutely, absolutely. I am, go ahead. Oh, I thought, give me just a second. I'm just going to put down, I'm going to put down policy implementation for right now, and I know it's not perfect, but just to kind of keep us moving.
I just want to put that way on here sometimes, because I think we sometimes would lack it.
Okay, no, that's okay. It's, it may not be perfect, but at least we have it noted. Yes.
Yeah, just quick, cybersecurity threats.
And I think that came off of, I don't know if that was in a lot of the things, but that did, I think, came up on the three. Anything else, strategic issues? So, anything that we have over there, but then I also want to now open this up, you guys have got that list of the three strategic issues. Is there anything on that list that we have not talked about, and we should have, that we did not capture as part of this? Please.
This is going to be a little sensitive, but in all of these threats, weaknesses, and then I've read ahead, but there seems to be, it might be because we have a newer board, or a more three-year-old board, or a majority with three years less, but I do sense a theme where there's like a disconnect possibly between the board and staff on certain things, and I think that's really, I think that's a strategic issue, and one that we need to dig into, because, well, from where I sit, like, I don't desire that, and I think that's probably, I think I see other heads nodding. And so, I think it's probably a pretty easy thing to fix, or at least work on, but if we don't address it, then I think it can lead to additional strategic issues, and, you know, some of the things, yeah, they're worth unpacking.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I think that's...
And I think that needs to be done to be effective.
Yeah, no, excellent strategic issue. Yeah, absolutely. Other strategic issues, please.
Cory, I don't know if this is a strategic issue, so looking for a little bit of guidance. We talk a lot about financial capacity, and I often wonder, as we've grown as a community, I've been here for about 18 years and doubled in size as population, does the community understand what it costs to be a part of this community? And the exceptional services, and every, all the amenities that we have? And that relates to generating revenue in many, many ways.
Can I, is...
You can do whatever you want.
Let me ask you, is it, does it have to do with being an informed community? That, that there's kind of, there's some tension there, there's some kind of give and take, and maybe there, the, the community doesn't always kind of understand some of the challenges. Do you think that that captures it? I've got a yes over here, a better guess. All right, I got it, I got it, definitely. Does that kind of capture?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's part of the strategic issue.
Mm-hmm, no, I agree.
As much as we try to push out information, it may not resonate that there's a cost.
Yeah, that you, that you, that you need to have a better informed community, that there's a gap.
So to piggyback off that, when people call me, and they give me their opinion, okay, then I say, well, may I share some other things with you? So I share A, B, and C, and then I would say to them, now, tell me what you think. Well, their opinion may change, their opinion may stay the same, but at least they're giving me an informed opinion.
Yeah.
Because they've gotten better facts, things that I know, that I have material for, and so I think this informed community, Vernon, is really important, because I think we need more informed opinions from our constituents, rather than just off-the-wall opinions, because they've heard things, or they read something on Nextdoor, and somebody spouts off and says all these things, which is totally not even in the ballpark of facts. So we have that problem, I think, due to the culture we are in, and the technology availability, and everybody has an opinion, I like blue, I like green, or whatever.
Yeah.
Or hey, you know, whatever the opinion of the day is. So I think that's one of our major problems, is making sure our people are informed, and sometimes we have people come and sit in the audience, and, and Patrick was sitting there trying to explain something one time, a few meetings back, and somebody's sitting there going, like, no, the whole time, and he was trying to be informative.
Sure.
So I think we have a disconnect, and I don't know how you fix that.
Yeah, well, and that's, we're going to start talking about, we're, that is for later, so right now, we're just identifying the issues, which I think you guys have done very nicely. Other strategic issues, and again, feel free to look through those three. We've got, we've got 10 now, two or three more would be about all I want, but only if we feel like we're missing something. If we feel like we've got a pretty good comprehensive list. Eric, please.
We're heading into a pretty significant season of change organizationally, physically, out of this building into an interim city hall, where people working in a different environment, different proximities to one another. We're also seeing some, some pretty significant changeover in some of our senior staff leadership. We're just hitting that, and we're seeing some turnover elsewhere in the organization. So there's some churn out there, and so change is going to be a pretty common thread in everything we're doing. So it's like man, being intentional about how we manage change and think about it, and recognizing that we are going through change. And even when it's really good change, it still has ramifications, it's still hard, it still has a personal element to it.
Yeah.
So I think that, just kind of recognizing that and knowing that that is part of the journey we're on.
Yeah.
Is going to be important strategically.
Even good change, yeah, even good change can have a stressful part of component. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Anyone else from staff? I want to make sure that we're getting staff input on this. Have we covered it, staff? Is there anything that we're missing? All right, so here's what we are going to do. We are going to call it tonight with our list of strategic challenges. Can you put me to my next slide? Woo! I know. You know Cory, whenever we can get out 20 minutes early, Cory's all over that, right? So here is what, we are going to go ahead and go through kind of some of the stuff. We've actually covered a lot of this. We will pick this back up tomorrow, probably with this slide. So we will start here tomorrow, one more slide for me, please. There you go. So here's what we're going to do, two more slides ahead. There we go. For tomorrow, we are going to finalize mission, we are going to do goals and outcomes. This is going to turn into somewhere between four and six goals, and it's going, we're going to talk about outcomes. This is going to be mostly small group work tomorrow. We're going to go ahead and pick it up then. I do want to thank everybody, it is hard to be occupied all day and then come into a night meeting and do this again, so thank you very much for the energy, and 23 minutes early. Somebody call the public meeting, please. meeting, please. Yep, we got to end a public meeting, I think, right?
Mayor.
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 Oh, sorry, I was asleep. Thank you, Cory. Thanks for everybody participating. Is there any other business? If not, I look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Potts, second by Alderman Burger. All in favor, say aye and leave the room.